And USC Norris Cancer Hospital. The rankings give recognition to hospitals that excel in treating the most challenging patients and conditions. UCLA Health Hospitals in Westwood and Santa Monica took top honors with being number one in both LA and California, with a number four ranking in the country. The standard LA is setting with its work on zero emission is unprecedented. And now Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has deployed its first zero emission bus for the G Line in San Fernando Valley with 40 more buses planned by the end of the year. The G Line opened 15 years ago and runs 24/7. About half of the bus's lines, 30,000 riders have returned since the pandemic hit. Los Angeles City Metro System will add 100 zero emission buses in total by the end of 2020. More than half of nannies, home care workers, and house cleaners experience pressure to work in dangerous conditions by their employers. The report, "Hidden Work, Hidden Pain: Injury Experiences of Domestic Workers in California", offers insight that these workers need to be added to California's Occupational Safety and Health Protections, according to UCLA's Labor Occupational Safety and Health Program. A staggering 85% of respondents described workplace injuries, with half continuing to work due to fear of losing their job. Supporters say that workplace protections should extend to residential domestic workers, and this would be accomplished through the passing of the Senate Bill 1257, the Health and Safety for All Workers Act. SB 1257 was already passed in the state senate this past June. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield has procured 3,000 bottles of hand sanitizer from Best Formulations Incorporated for distribution in the West San Fernando Valley. Best Formulations Incorporated, Project WAWU, "We Are With You", utilizing his Emergency Preparedness Community Action Team, Bobcat. Councilmember Blumenfield will distribute the bottles of sanitizer to constituents, homeless, first responders, seniors, and others, with bottles being dispersed at all local events and directly to local organizations.
Griffith Park is one of the crown jewels of Los Angeles. It's one of over 400 public parks within the city of Los Angeles. And patrolling those hundreds of acres of land is a pretty special group of people. From lost hikers to face mask enforcement, for the LA City Park Rangers, it's all about keeping people safe.
Our department has 450 parks that we patrol, from the harbor area all the way up to the foothills, and then from East Los Angeles all the way to the ocean.
We really don't know what we're responding to on any given day. It could be law enforcement calls all day. It could be a fire that takes us 12, 13, 14 hours to handle. Or it just could be a lot of making sure that everybody's hydrated, that nobody's lost in the park, that whoever has their vehicle vandalized or burglarized, we take the reports. I mean, we just try to make sure we ensure the safety of all park patrons, and everyone that comes to the park enjoys their stay at the park.
We have a large area to cover. We have, you know, 95 miles of trails throughout the city.
All the directives from the governor, we've tried to apply here in the parks.
We're monitoring to make sure that folks are in compliance with the social distancing and with the mask. When we see folks not wearing their mask, we ask them to put the mask on. When there's groups of, you know, 10 to 12 people that are congregating, we will ask them to separate.
What we had to do is all the play areas that are here, we've had to caution tape them off, so people don't congregate.
As a precaution, what we're doing is we're closing off the parks at 50% capacity.
When it's over 50%, we shut down all gates that lead into the park. As soon as enough people leave, we reopen up the parks.
It's still, you know, it's safe to come out here. We encourage people to come out to the parks and have a good time.
It's time for the latest edition of LA Gives Back. In downtown Los Angeles, Ketchum YMCA mixes exercise equipment with school supplies. And in Council District 9, a local bookmobile provides a literary escape for readers of all ages.
Ketchum Downtown YMCA is providing resources to families in need during the COVID crisis. Today, we're delivering 3,000 meals to families. We started bringing these meals to families back in March when this all started.
So we're here today providing healthy summer camp kits for kids to keep them active and moving at home, to talk to them about healthy habits, including healthy eating, physical activity, sleep, and emotional well-being. This is our third location that we're doing at the YMCA, and we're trying to keep these events going because kids need us now more than ever, and families need us. So it's just a little something to keep kids happy and healthy at home.
Programas como esta ayudan a la comunidad porque hay muchas familias de las que no están asistiendo a trabajar tampoco y esto les ayuda.
So what you're seeing today is the bookmobile's free book table at the Central Avenue Farmer's Market. We were invited to participate in this market by Councilman Price's office, and it's been absolutely wonderful. This project, for me, started very personally with my own students at Santee Education Complex, who were bored, frustrated, angry, and depressed in the early weeks of the pandemic. And then as it gradually continued, they reached out to me that they were frustrated, they had nothing to do at home, they were burned out unbelievably.
This is our second time hosting it, and our first one was a great success. Claudia Lach with Little Books, so today she's prepared with a lot more books. I think this is something that is needed during this difficult time when kids aren't at school, you know, kids are at home. So it's an opportunity for them to have an avenue to kind of escape reading a book. So they're all free, we have for all ages, so lots of adventures and stories for kids to keep busy at home.
We came last week for fruits and vegetables, and we saw this event about the free books, and they love the books. They started reading immediately.
Last week, everyone was very grateful. People told me, "Thank you so much, we don't have any books at home. You're doing a real service to us." And I thought, "I'm really happy to do that, because I love to read."
I definitely want to invite everybody to visit the Farmer's Market. We're here every Thursday from 10 to 2. We have vegetables, fruit, you can come and shop. Obviously, wear your mask and practice social distancing. Our bookmobile, our book giveaway will be here as well every Thursday. So come out, grab a book, do some shopping, and join us here in the main district.
The Census Bureau of Los Angeles is taking full advantage of the nationwide response extension, and they've got their sights set on South LA. They recently teamed up with field deputies from Council District 15 and the Watts Labor Action Center for the Watts Let's Get Counted Event.
We're here at the Watts Labor Action Center to get people to respond to the 2020 Census. We've partnered with the Census Bureau, who's here, and is gonna be helping people out, respond, and answer their questions. We've partnered with WeClack, with the Watts Neighborhood Council, with Councilman Buscayino's office, the mayor's office, to encourage everyone in this neighborhood to respond to the census. The census is a national count of everybody living in this country. And so it happens once every 10 years, and the data that we get from counting everybody is then used to distribute funding to local, state, and tribal governments, and to determine political representation at all levels of government. Participating in the census is private and confidential. Your information is secure, it will never be shared with anybody, including other law enforcement agencies. There is also no citizenship question, or they don't ask you about immigration status on the census. It's really fast and easy to respond to the census. It only takes five to 10 minutes, and nine questions, that's it. You can do it in three ways. Respond online at my2020census.gov. You can respond by phone at 844-330-2020. Or you can respond to the census by mail.
This is the first time I did my census as an adult, and I learned more, what is it gonna do to my community and my future kids and the future in the community. So I'm like, wow, this is good for the community.
Preparing for the unthinkable, an active shooter. You can actually prepare. And fortunately, I'm joined today by Mona Curry, who's emergency manager, to tell us all about the program Run, Hide, Fight. How did the Preparedness Program Run, Hide, Fight within the Los Angeles Police Department get created in the first place?
Well, in 2013, we had an incident in the city of LA that kind of scared a lot of people, including myself. So from that, we started to think about, you know, what would we do if we were in the building at work and that threat appeared? You know, how would we respond? How would we handle it? So the program has three options. So run being the best option, and the first option, and the one you should always do if you can do, and then there's hide, and then there's fight. So the minute you hear something, you start to think something's going on. If you can run safely away from that threat, that's what you should definitely do.
If you're running from the location, you should stop and provide whatever information, whatever solid information you have, to the officers, because that information is key. That's gonna be crucial going downrange, trying to contact the suspects. I always tell people the same thing. Run out of there, and we'll take care of the rest. We always want to minimize the number of victims that are impacted by the action of an active shooter.
So you can't run. Either you don't know where the sound is coming from, you don't know what's happening, you're terrified out of your mind. Next move is?
Well, then you can hide. So when you hide, you have to do things to really make yourself unknown to the shooter. So you would turn off the lights if you're in a room, you would lock the door, you would find a safe area, a secure space. While you're hiding, you still have to position yourself to defend yourself if that situation arises.
And the last part, fight.
So fight is the last option. It's the least desirable option. But if you have no other options, you're going to fight. So you have to commit yourself to that act, because if you're making that choice, you're at a very serious point in the whole incident. It's life or death at this point.
Is it possible to actually psychologically prepare yourself?
Well, you can. I mean, so some of the principles that we discuss, know your, you have an awareness of your surroundings. That is the most important thing, is when you're out in public, have an awareness of your surroundings.
Always understand where you are. So if you're in an unfamiliar area, look for those exits. Just, you know, have an idea of the space you're in, and what you can do to protect yourself and save yourself if you need to do that.
Your priority is you and your loved ones, and your safety.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate all this very important information, albeit I hope nobody has to use it, ever, ever, ever.
Enjoy open-air dining at the El Cid. Discover the Uncabaret Zoom Edition. And the seventh annual LA Diversity Film Festival goes online. All this next on Virtual Things to Do.
The wildly popular Fever Originals Candlelight Series is heading to your favorite outdoor restaurants in their new socially distant and intimate open-air dinner series. Now held exclusively in open-air restaurants, enjoy the pairing of their signature classical music programs and your favorite dishes from El Cid while the surroundings flicker by candlelight. Prepare to enjoy the best eats LA has to offer and some of the most treasured classical masterpieces. Your dining experience promises to be both magical and relaxing with a candlelight open-air dinner featuring Vivaldi at El Cid. 4212 West Sunset Boulevard. For ticket information, visit their listing on feverup.com. It's been called one of the best livestream comedy shows to watch while quarantining. Beth Lepides brings you Uncabaret Zoom Edition. Join the fun August 9 when her guests Isaac Mizrahi, Julia Sweeney, Alec Mappa, Josie Long, and others share stories, wisdom, rants, and song. Don't miss a legendary comedy innovation largely responsible for the revolution in alt-comedy. Uncabaret Zoom Edition rolls out Sunday, August 9, beginning at 7:30 PM. For details and ticket information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Be sure to check out the Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival online. In this current times of a global pandemic and human rights movement, the need and responsibility to bear witness to the stories told by artists from around the world is as important as ever. The Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival highlights narratives and experiences of those that have been left out of the traditional limelight while celebrating the power of storytelling and filmmaking. This is the first year LA DFF will be 100% streamable, using technology to reach a wider audience and amplifying voices with and for the global independent film community. Great stories are streaming August 4 through the 30th. For more information, visit ladff.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saeda Pagan. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, August 5. I am Nuri Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, clear.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, here.
Sidil.
Sidil, here.
Harris Dawson.
Present.
Coetz. Coetz.
Present.
Grecorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Present.
Wesson, here.
Fourteen members in a court, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 4th, 2020.
Mr. Rue moves and Mr. Grecorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sadio moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order.
Items one through five are items for which public hearings have been held. Item six through fifteen are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item sixteen is a closed session item that was waived by Budget and Finance Committee. And item seventeen on the continuation agenda is also a closed session item. Ten votes are required.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. Anyone wish to call any of these items specials or have an amended motion to introduce? Mr. Bonin?
Thanks, Madam President. I'd like to call items five and twelve special for comments, no amendments, and nothing else.
Items five and items twelve for Mr. Bonin. Members, any others? Can you see none? Let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, go ahead and read the calling information for our callers this morning.
Yes, as indicated, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment if you wish. We'll tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off topic, the President will cut you off, and you will forfeit the remainder of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take thirty minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live at the council meeting. If you're also listening to the meeting on your computer, channel thirty-five, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on those other devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Before we go into public comment, Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on items one through four, which public comment has already been satisfied? Let's go ahead and call the roll on items one through four.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson. Coetz.
Aye.
Grecorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to public comment now. Go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi from CD4. I'd like to speak on item five and give general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I do support this committee having some authority and power to shape policy, but also this committee should not only just consult with people who are or who have been homeless, but should appoint them. How these individuals understand this best, the only way to ensure they get the help they need is to have people on the committee who are or have been in that situation. Metrophile is chair of that committee, but should step down and be removed because, like, it was Friday that they cleared an encampment in Hollywood to make way for that illicit cop party? Unacceptable. Okay, I'm gonna move on to general now. I have to call in for my job because you guys want to do yours. I'm so tired of this. I'm so tired of being angry that none of you care. This is the nation's most progressive city council, really? You're definitely the nation's most paid and the nation's most powerful, but you don't even use that power, for good at least. I also seriously doubt that only one of you is corrupt. Please don't just listen to us, do what we're telling you to do. If you think it's bad now, I can only imagine how much worse things will become if you don't bring the change we're asking. Also putting out that survey when People's Budget, LA already did it months ago, y'all are getting paid for us to do your job. Give up your salaries, try living off unemployment for a while, and see how well that goes. Maybe then you'll understand what a crisis we're in and why you need to cancel rent. I yield.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Mavia Girl. My pronouns are she/her, and I'd like to speak on item number five.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you. Hi, everybody, my name is Mavia Girl. I'm on the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council and serve as the Treasurer and is one of our homelessness liaisons for the city. And I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of forming a commission on lived experience with homelessness, especially because the number of Angelenos at risk for becoming unhoused is increasing every day. Despite the so-called moratorium on evictions, landlords are still threatening tenants across the city, including in the apartment building that I live in, in Silver Lake. More than 180,000 Angelenos applied for your emergency rental assistance lottery, yet only 50,000 will receive only $2,000. This is not enough. You need to cancel rent or face an unimaginable crisis in the very near future. I yield my time, thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Zachary Warma, and item number five.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. Zachary Warma, Public Affairs Specialist with Downtown Women's Center here. On behalf of the Downtown Women's Center, I wish to urge your support in favor of the creation of a committee on lived experience with homelessness. As this council moves in a direction towards more participatory budgeting, it's imperative that policy and funding decisions about homelessness fully reflect the priorities and values of Angelenos who have been unhoused and those who are currently without stable housing. In order to be maximally efficacious, the commission must include the voices of the unique subpopulations who are housing insecure, including women, particularly black women and other women of color, trans women, and those who've experienced domestic violence. This commission also cannot be a rubber stamp or a box of checks, but rather an entity that can meaningfully inform and shape municipal policies. We are so grateful for Councilmember Bonin's leadership in helping to make this commission a reality, and we ask that you vote in favor of this motion today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Rob Kwon. I'd like to speak on items nine and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
You know, I'm really torn on item nine about prohibiting the city from utilizing or benefiting from purchasing items as a result of prison labor. Normally something I'd support, but just looking at some of your colleagues, I don't know how I feel about depriving them of future employment opportunities. Just really looking out for Councilmembers Weezer, Englander, and Stafford B. there. So, you know, I just wanted to note that. For my general public comment, I'd like to note that for all you talk about participatory budgeting and all that, you're limiting public comment to thirty minutes now, which is actually the bare minimum that your council rules provide. I remember not too long ago when you used to spend two hours per meeting on presentations and proclamations. Absolutely ridiculous. This is just silly. And I don't know why you're confused that people are upset with you, that people are blasting you online, that people are going out in front of your houses. Lastly, you know, there was a shooting outside of a major party at an Airbnb, and I just think it's ridiculous that four months ago, you were sent a report in response to a motion by Councilmen Coetz and Rodriguez on Airbnb and home sharing and sanitary conditions that said, "We don't have any rules for this, really. We need to create a system, but it's gonna be really hard to do anything like we do for hotels. Maybe we should just shut them all down." And instead of actually picking up that item, you haven't heard it in four months. Four months! Maybe I missed something from the county, or the state, or the mayor put out an executive order, but you haven't shut them down, and that's certainly something you could do. So why haven't you heard that Airbnb ordinance for four months?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Catherine, and I'd like to speak on item five and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
In terms of item five, I want to echo the people who have come before me calling for the creation of this council and appointment of people who actually have lived experience with being unhoused, and I want to urge them to actually take this seriously. You guys have spent a lot of time wringing your hands about the homelessness crisis in Los Angeles and acting like you have absolutely no ability to do anything about it, which is, as someone else said, why we're all so mad. And I also want to call out Mitch O'Farrell, who recently cleared an encampment in Hollywood so the LA sheriff could have a party at Saffa Crass. And I'm just wondering why the rules actually don't apply to them, and wondering how you think that you can reform this body or police this body when the basic rules of public health and safety are considered like completely beneath them? So these people are clearly acting like they're above the law in all regards, and why do you think this is a body that we can reform? We want to defund the police, and I want that money to go directly to the massive unhoused population and the population that is deeply vulnerable right now of being at risk for eviction. This, as someone else said, the so-called eviction moratorium, which is not protecting people at all, coupled with the fact that unemployment has expired, means that we are on the verge of such a massive crisis. I don't think that anyone in the city is prepared for, and certainly not you guys because you refuse to do your job. And you sent out this budget meeting, I mean this budget survey. This has already been done. BLM presented their findings to you. We've done this, we've tried to do your job for you, and this is like a survey that you guys are gonna completely dismiss. You'll look at it once and be like, "Okay, cool, thanks, guys," and move on. So we've done the work for you already. Don't do this and pretend, and use it as an excuse to not take people's concerns seriously. You need to seriously sit down with People's City Council and BLM and actually develop the budget that we are asking for. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Thanks, it's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on all the items and a general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Previn, you have three minutes for all your items and one minute for a general public comment. Go ahead.
Thanks. So I want to start by pointing out that a commission on lived experience with homelessness is a nice idea, and there should absolutely be people who've had lived experience involved in the planning and helping. That said, to have it be an exclusively experience-based advisor may not be in the best interests of the population, because sometimes being homeless makes it harder to do some of the fighting and demanding for justice that's necessary. And to have advocates who are not necessarily homeless but who are fighting hard for the homeless can be a good thing. That said, I find your lawsuits, like the Alliance lawsuit at item seventeen today, being done in closed session, really a violation of the public trust. Now, you may say you have the attorney-client privilege to do that, but I gotta tell you, the people want to know what's going on, they want solutions. Listen for the many voices who've called in seeking a redistribution of the way we fund the police in Los Angeles. Why are the solutions always with people in uniforms and weapons? It's not what the people really want. And to make those changes, you have to have, you know, coherent commissions and meetings. And I don't understand why that's not happening. One big issue that's come up is you're gonna, Buscayino cracked the whip and decided, "We gotta go after the repeat offenders for, you know, cleaning up the property so there's not fire danger." Obviously, that should happen, but what they've figured out is now, whatever we collect for people who we penalize by cleaning up for them, let's make sure that half goes to the real property trust fund of each of the neighborhood, of each of the council districts, so like Grecorian or David Rue. Now, Grecorian and David Rue both get a lot of contributions from public benefit money from the likes of NBC, Universal, and yet the people never really see where that money goes. They kind of de-flavorize it, and Weezer was also involved in taking public benefit money for development projects as part of the pro quo. You know, he would get big sums that then kind of simmer out, slip out the door into various helpful nonprofits, and we never see the benefit. So that's a disaster. Now, in terms of historic preservation overlay zones, I mean, I don't want to be too negative, but what a scam! I mean, many of these are ordinary homes that could be preserved, should be preserved, but to make it be about paying these commissions of fakers who don't actually know what really good architecture is, but play this weird game of protection, and it's like you have to, it's almost like the little mafia scam. So I do not support this kind of thing, and I don't think we should be giving big tax breaks for the rich people who fix up and keep historical properties nice, because quite frankly, that's what rich people should do, not to get more money out of the public funds that are diminished because of COVID, because of mismanagement, because of excessive funds to the law enforcement side. And I just want to remind, as much as we appreciate the fire department, especially now during fire season, that it is never a good time, Mr. Coetz, Catherine Barger, to scapegoat the homeless for what is an environmental condition mostly brought on by climate change, but many other factors. And to do that even a little is unthinkable, and I direct you to the Intercept article that was written a couple of years ago with myself and others about that issue. And whereas I appreciate that you're allowing me to speak for so long uninterrupted, I'm wondering if there's a wall, or if I'm in what section I'm in here, because it's very hard in a vacuum. Is anybody there, for example? You are there. Okay, well, I appreciate your...
Continue, Mr. Previn.
...your listening. I was gonna close by reminding that the people do not cede...
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, my name is Tiffany Du Renee Smith. I live in CD8, and I want to speak on general public comment, but in support of agenda item number five, forming a commission on lived experience with homelessness.
Sure, so you have one minute for item five, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you. I experienced five years of homelessness as a direct result of my dysfunctional domestic violence relationship. I am currently an advocate for people experiencing homelessness and domestic violence survivors. I'm a member of the Domestic Violence Homeless Services Coalition. It's very critical that the city makes decisions about homelessness that fully reflect the priorities and values of those who have experienced homelessness and those who are currently unhoused. currently unhoused. Just like 40% of the homeless population is black, I expect this new commission to also reflect that demographic. And please include the many unique groups who are currently unhoused, including women, particularly black women and other women of color, trans women, those who have experienced domestic violence and other demographics that I may have missed that I know you have the statistics for. I ask that you vote in favor of this motion today and that you give this commission real authority in helping to shape how Los Angeles helps its unhoused residents, and that you consider compensating those on the new commission for their consultation expertise. There are plenty of us who are ready, willing, able, and capable to serve on this commission. Thank you very much.
Speaker, do you want to take your general public comment? No? I think she's hung up.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Brett. I'd just like to offer a general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Greetings, noble council. It's appalling that we're five days into our fifth month of a global pandemic, and you all still fail to cancel already and ban evictions. It's not even on the agenda. What in the actual fuck is wrong with you? Even Trump supports an eviction ban. How is Donald Trump more progressive than you? The money's there. You can feasibly do it, and every single one of you knows it's true. Quit passing the buck. Quit centering your corporate interests and save some fucking lives. God damn it, I can't wait till Mr. Rahm gets in there and exposes you crooks. And to you, Strapp and Fable, how dare you continuously interrupt people last week while they were executing their First Amendment rights? You are not God. I am. You and everyone in that room can eat this shit.
Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all items, my mommy. And general comment?
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you, you little fat cunt. Now, we're getting all of these buildings off a reef. Reef stands for rape of innocent property owners. Thank you, Gil Sedia, for making it possible for the one building in your district. And thank you to Weezer 2.0, Mark Wizzi, Harris Dawson, for all of your buildings that you're taking off a reef. I know you must have got a lot of payoffs for it. Good job. Now we get to the federal litigation. I'm standing here in front of the United States courthouse where Judge Carter is, and he wants you to go into closed session and talk about the homeless. Look at the tents, Mr. Fable. Pretty soon, Mr. Weezer might be living in one of them. I'll get to that at my general comments. But you'll have to wait unless you say please. Now, they're all over the place, the homeless. You have all the neggers. You have the Jews. You have the Japanese. You have the Mexican. You even have all the Wall Street anchors and traders. All of them there, living in tents and cardboard boxes using stock certificates as a roof. Please give these people affordable housing. Mr. Weezer was going to give them all affordable housing, but no, Larry, no, Mr. Fable, you had to do it the wrong way. But now, I'll yield that time, fuck you, and I'll go into my general comment for a surprise announcement. So my general comment is, I'm at the U.S. courthouse, 350 West First Street, and we're waiting for Councilman, and he is still a Councilman, Jose Weezer to emerge. He has a message for Mr. Fable. Mr. Fable, it turns out Mr. Weezer doesn't qualify for a free lawyer because you filled out his paperwork wrong on his disclosures. You stupid little cocksucker. Now he's got to hire his old attorney and fire his current public defenders. Judge Walter has another message. Don't walk into federal court with fraudulent financial statements. Please, in the future, Mr. Price, when you get invited and Mr. Lee, allow those disclosures properly so Mr. Walter, Judge Walter, can get that trial going and get that conviction and certain process as soon as humanly possible. If this wasn't a...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on Items Five, Nine, and General Public Comment.
Sure, you have one minute for each. Please go ahead.
Regarding Item Five, I am echoing what the other callers are saying, that we do need a committee to address the homeless epidemic that's happening in this city. I really strongly urge zero cops to be associated with that. Number Nine, I agree that we should label these products as prison labor. We should also change the text to call it what it is, which is modern-day slavery on all prison labor. And for general public comments, you know, I think this weekend we saw a shining example of what defunding the police could do. Sassafras Saloon held an entire pig party and was mask optional, and the next day, armed police officers with guns were handing out masks to community members. This is the exact type of line item that can be cut immediately from the budget. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Suzette Shaw. Hold on. Hello, my name is Suzette Shaw. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm a Skid Row resident. I write, talk, and I advocate Skid Row from a woman's perspective. I'm also a member of the Domestic Violence Coalition here in downtown Los Angeles. And I'm writing and I'm calling in in regards to Item Number Five. I'd like to speak on behalf of the fact of eight years ago, almost, I ended up homeless here in Los Angeles. And in that time, you know, the inequities of why I ended up homeless and everything that's happened pursuant has really dealt with the lack of, the cognitive dissonance of oftentimes those running the systems and those continually perpetuating the trauma against me. As a person who has taken my lived experience to now advocate for myself and others, I am advocating today on behalf of a lived experience advisory council that can empower the needs and help shift the paradigm from those of the inequities. I echo what Ms. Tiffany Duvernay Smith said in regards to, I ask that you make sure that there is a body of constituents that is respective of the demographic of the homeless population here in these United States of America, which houses the highest homeless population, which is predominantly African-American. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Eric Chevron, CD thirteen. I want to speak on Item Five and General Public.
Sure, you have one minute for each. Please begin.
You know, I find it pretty incredible. We're in August of 2020, and we're talking about making a report on the lived experience of homelessness in Los Angeles. I want to uplift caller Tiffany. In her call, I think she had it right, 40% of homeless people are black, houseless people are black, and so the committee should reflect that. But I just would like to say that, you know, I'm not really sure why we need this panel when we know what the stakes are at this point. 184,000 of the homeless people in LA are children, between 36,000 and 120,000 households. 72% are unsheltered at this point. We know the numbers. We know what it's like out there. Although, you know what, CD thirteen, Mitchell Farrell does it, because a few weeks ago, he told us he's never even seen what a sweep is like. He's never been to what...
Thank you, Speaker.
What do they call it? So...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Pamela Crenshaw. I would like to speak on Item Number Five in general comment.
Sure, you have a minute each.
Again, my name is Pamela Crenshaw, and I want to speak on Item Five as an advocate for the domestic violence survivors who have personally experienced homelessness as a result of violence in my life. More than ever, it's critical that the city makes a decision about homelessness. It fully reflects the priorities and values of those who have experienced homelessness and those who are currently unhoused. It's also important for the Commission to include many unique groups, which myself, I'm a female, and I want to represent all women, but also senior citizens. There are a lot of senior citizens out there that have medical needs, who are homeless, and it's even those of us who are living in permanent sort of housing, which that's another trauma that we'll speak about on another meeting. But also, I'm a member of the LSA Lived Experience Advisory Board, and I just want to let you know of the importance of those of us who have lived experience, how meaningful and important it is for us to have a voice in this community. I ask that you vote in favor of Agenda Five today and that you give this commission real authority in helping to shape how LA helps and unhows residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Stavros. I'd like to speak on Items Five and One, or General, Five and General Comment, please. I'm sorry.
Sure. Please begin. You have a minute for each.
Pardon me? Sorry, I could not hear you.
That's right. You have one minute for each. Please begin.
Okay. I used to be homeless at one point, and I know that I'm one of the lucky ones because I was an invisible homeless person. Unfortunately, I have noticed through my time and my experience how much worse it is for those who have had it, way worse, who have experienced the hardships of sweeps and aggressive police force. So I just want to put my support in Item Number Five, to have a committee with others with lived experiences, because quite frankly, people that have not lived through it do not have the compassion or understanding that needs to be present where it is absolutely not. We have a lot more people that are about to be homeless if things don't happen with canceling rent and such. And so we really, really, really need to put the resources and the knowledge that we have, unfortunately, with our vast population that has lived experience. Two things. As a general comment, I would like to note that right now we are experiencing heat wave right now, and we still do not have assistance for people out there that are experiencing homelessness to go to a place where they can get respite from the heat, where they can get assistance. We need to defund the police and put services into action to help our vulnerable populations, which are filled with marginalized people and families that are struggling and deserve the help that they need. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Alicia Roden, Item Number Five.
One minute. Please go ahead. Go ahead, Speaker.
My name is Alicia Diane Roden. I'm an advocate for the Domestic Violence Homeless Coalition at the Downtown Women's Center. I think it's very important to have a lived experience board. I'm a person who has had domestic violence for many years, but now I'm an overcomer. But I think it's important that we have a lived experience. Many people are homeless. Many people right now don't know what to do. We are the safe, and I think we also should be paid for our time, because people need help, but we also need to look at, who can talk about lived experience but the person who's lived it? Yes, we have providers. Yes, we have other people, but we are the safe. I am the safe, and I would like to see people get the right advocacy and get help through lived experience. Thank you very much, and please consider this.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, are you there?
Now, have you heard? I want to speak on multiple items and general public comments. Three minutes in my public comment plane.
Please go ahead.
Well, you know, regarding the issue on homelessness, I have a master degree on homelessness because I experienced it. And my M.A.B.A. tells me all the bullshit I have to say to you guys regarding why H.H. money was stolen at the local level and that funded out to the people that really need it. Like, for example, Antonia Ramirez, who's always saluting Donald Trump. And what about the other homeless gentleman, Herman Herman, in 2018 when Jose Weezer kicked him out of his community enforcement to homelessness? That's horrible. And Mr. Weezer is now coming out of the courthouse.
So, Speaker, please get on topic.
I want to go to my public comment. Fuck this shit.
Sure. You have one minute.
42 U.S.C., 1983. Fuck the police. Defund the police. Defund social services and defund LSA, you fucking criminals. You're just as bad as Jose Weezer's adventures of going to trip for free, that fucking motherfucker. Here he comes. Let me get his picture. Hold on, niggers. Bye.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, are you there? Apparently not. I think we should go to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lindsay from CD four. I want to speak on Item Five and General Public Comment.
Sure, you have a minute for each. Please begin.
I want to echo many of the other callers and speak in support of the Commission on Lived Experience Homelessness. This commission needs to be cop-free. We do not want the LAPD to be involved with this in any way, shape, or form. And the people serving on this need to be able to have real authority and power to shape policy. They also need to be paid. We need people who know what they're talking about, who know what people need, and clearly this council doesn't. My public comment is that we need to cancel rent. If you guys want to pretend to care about the homelessness crisis, then you can also work on preventing it. We still don't have jobs. We still have no money to pay rent. So I don't know what you guys are doing if not canceling rent immediately. And while I'm here, we need to extend the relaxed parking enforcement indefinitely because the pandemic wants to stop on August 16th. We're not suddenly going to have somewhere to go on the 17th. Defund the police. I yield.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, that concludes our public comment for this meeting. So we're going to go ahead and close that. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on Items Six to Eleven. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield. Bonnen.
Bonnen, yes.
Buscaino.
Buscaino.
Yes.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Back to Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
All right, um, let's go ahead and vote on items thirteen through fifteen. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonnen.
Bonnen, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to go onto our special items. Item number five called special by Mr. Bonnen.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, item number five is, uh, the, uh, item seeking, uh, direction to the C L A to work on a proposal to create a commission, uh, on lived experience with homelessness here in Los Angeles. Uh, we have a, 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 a great tradition here in Los Angeles of trying to broaden our perspective and deepen our understanding of certain issues. Uh, over the past couple of years, the, the city, under the mayor's direction, has formed a transgender advisory committee, uh, which has helped, uh, craft policies and programs for the city of Los Angeles, uh, that help a population that would otherwise remain too voiceless and too unheard in Los Angeles. Uh, we have, for a very long time, had a commission on children, youth, and, and their families. Uh, we have, uh, a number of different committees now on, on, on human rights and on civil rights, all of which enrich our dialogue and our understanding. This seeks to do something which has been done at a, a, a smaller level, uh, within LASSA and, uh, within some agencies, and has been done in a handful of different jurisdictions, uh, in, in smaller cities around the country. The idea here is to create a commission on lived experience with homelessness, uh, that is at the level, uh, that, uh, that can be advisory to us as policymakers and to the, the city of Los Angeles and to the, the mayor of Los Angeles. Um, it, it is, uh, uh, very difficult sometimes for us to really understand what is being experienced on the streets. It took the city several years and the county several years to understand what was really wrong and why the emergency winter shelter program and that type of model was not an effective solution to homelessness. There were too many barriers. People couldn't bring their belongings. People couldn't be with their spouses. People couldn't, uh, uh, bring their pets. And once Los Angeles came to a better understanding of what all those barriers were by hearing from people who were living in those shelters or who found those barriers to keep them out of shelters, we created a much better model, uh, the bridge shelter program here in Los Angeles that addressed a lot of those needs. A, a commission on lived experience, if it is, as I envision it, people who are currently homeless or people who recently were homeless, so it's not people who had experience being homeless twenty years ago when things were very different, but have experience with how things are now, they can help us answer questions and give us information that we don't have about what really are the barriers to long-term housing placement? What are the barriers to simply accessing service? What is it like living on the street in a tent and experiencing one of our care cleanups? What does that do and what is that impact? How effective is outreach here in Los Angeles? We, I think it's very easy to believe with all the money we have put into outreach that there is outreach constantly and everyone is, is, is being greeted by social workers on a regular basis, and the reality is, uh, quite different. How cumbersome is the coordinated entry system? Uh, all those are questions that can be helped answered, uh, by a commission on lived experience. Done right, the commission on lived experience would need to reflect the unhoused population here in Los Angeles. It would need to be disproportionately African-American, as is the homeless population in Los Angeles. It would need to be people on it who are survivors of domestic violence. There would need to be people, uh, on it who have disabilities. We need something that, that actually reflects Los Angeles. There would need to be, uh, a youth representative that needs to reflect the diversity. Done right, given the barriers, uh, to participating for people who are, who are unhoused, who don't have an income, who don't have access to, to transit or technology, you would need training and you would need a stipend, and that's how it has been done successfully in other jurisdictions. And I'm glad to report that the Liberty Hill Foundation, which does a, a great job uh, doing commission of recruitment training, has offered to provide training for our commissioners and help provide a, a stipend as well. So, um, uh, I think this is a, a good and healthy step for Los Angeles to be taking to deepen our understanding of both programs and of policies, and, um, it would be a great benefit, uh, to us to, to move forward on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bonnen.
Jacob agrees.
Excuse me, Mr. Buscaino?
Looks like Jacob agrees too, Madam President.
Oh, Jacob. All right, let's prepare to vote on item number five. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonnen.
Bonnen, aye.
Oh, you see, Jacob just cast his vote.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number twelve, called special by Mr. Bonnen.
Uh, thank you again, Madam President. Uh, colleagues, uh, this asks us, uh, to take a position in favor of a piece of state legislation, uh, A B fourteen thirty-six by Assemblyman David Chu with a, a number of co-sponsors, uh, backed by affordable housing, uh, organizations and tenants organizations, uh, uh, across the state of California, known by some as, uh, the, uh, Homes Not Tense Act. Uh, this would be, this is the premier renter protection eviction prevention piece of legislation in Sacramento, uh, right now. Uh, what this bill would do, and it's scheduled to go before the Senate Judiciary Committee on August fourteenth, is it would make it illegal to evict a renter for non-payment of rent that is accrued during the COVID-nineteen emergency and ninety days afterwards. Uh, after the moratorium period, landlords would be encouraged to accept rent repayment agreements instead of filing evictions, and the legislation would also prevent rent debt accrued during COVID-nineteen from negatively affecting a tenant's credit score, which effectively prohibits them from, from finding housing later. Um, uh, this is very similar to a proposal that we considered earlier in the year, which, um, would have effectively turned, uh, the, the debt that renters are accumulating during the COVID-nineteen pandemic into consumer debt. So, it's something that can be adjudicated, uh, uh, as, as a collection matter, but not as something that by itself can be a cause for, uh, eviction. Um, and, uh, recently, the authors of the bill have, uh, accepted and proposed amendments that would also include mortgage forbearance provisions for property owners in this as well. In order to take the financial burden off of property owners and prevent foreclosures, it grants a one-year forbearance to small landlords with properties of up to four units.
What do we call that?
And, uh, property owners of five or more units would also be eligible to request, request a, a six-month forbearance. Uh, this measure, uh, certainly is not enough. It does not go as far as many of us would like. It does not grant, uh, a rent or mortgage cancellation, as would federal legislation that this body supports, but it is an important step and one that is particularly crucial right now because the California Judicial Council, um, which, uh, as we were considering our eviction protections earlier in this year, decided to halt eviction proceedings, has warned that they may be overturning their decision as early as August fourteenth. And we are looking at the prospect in the next few months of hundreds of thousands of California families, uh, at minimum, tens of thousands of, of families of Angelenos, uh, being evicted and forced out into the street, and there are many, many more steps that need to be taken locally, federally, and at the state level, uh, and this is an important one, and it is the one that has been, uh, identified as, as the most important , uh, renter protection in Sacramento right now. Uh, so I'd ask, uh, for an eye vote on this, and thank you.
I have something to say.
No, that's okay.
All right, let's prepare to vote on item number twelve. Please open the roll.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonnen, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, members, we're going to prepare the room to go into closed session on item sixteen. So, sergeants, please prepare council chambers as well as I T A, prepare our Zoom meeting as well. We'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you.
...to ensure that our most vulnerable and neediest neighbors were taken care of.
You've really, uh, stood tall, uh, you've really provided leadership at a moment of crisis, and you've really been the better angels of the city.
I often tell everybody how much city workers, uh, are really dedicated to the city, and you have proved that once again with your actions.
You are all superheroes among many heroes in our community.
As a disaster service worker during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, there is no more important work than you are doing right now.
We cannot do anything without you, and we really appreciate all the valuable contributions. You've really helped our most vulnerable Angelenos through this very difficult time.
Your commitment to your city and your neighbors is a credit to all city workers.
Your selfless actions, working at the test centers, Project Brimkey, and the many other D S W assignments have served the city and the many Angelenos in need during these difficult times.
You embody what it is to be a city employee. Your work and dedication is critical to the city of Los Angeles in this time of need.
What you do during the summer set of time is very essential and very important to the city.
Putting shelters over our homeless community, providing food to our senior citizens, you are saving lives. We're so proud of you.
I see you, and I appreciate so much as somebody who lives in the city of L A and who loves the city of Los Angeles, your service to your city.
The testing site, helping older Angelenos at a senior meals hotline, or assisting those who are experiencing homelessness at a shelter.
You've made a huge difference in the daily lives and saved probably many lives throughout this pandemic.
Just wanted to thank all of you disaster service workers for your great efforts in helping the city of Los Angeles.
I really want to thank the over one hundred and eighty-five employees from the Bureau of Engineering who have served as disaster service workers.
So, on behalf of the four million residents we all serve, thank you for your selflessness, your dedication, and being angels in this city of angels.
And from my team to yours, I want to say, "Thank you."
I really want to thank you. You are the best of Los Angeles.
Offer you a big virtual hug and a super mil gracias and a very heartfelt thank you.
Thank you all again.
So, again, you have our deepest gratitude.
On behalf of myself and the Information Technology Agency, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing.
From every department around the city, thank you.
I am so proud of you, so proud to serve alongside you as a city employee. Thank you so much.
Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You are an example of why Los Angeles is called the City of Angels. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks to all of you.
On behalf of your colleagues, we love you, we appreciate you, you are our heroes. Thank you.
We're all so grateful for the city workforce and all the work that you've done throughout this pandemic. Thank you.
Once again, thank you.
We will get through these days together, and we will get through them because of you.
L A strong.
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 Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to request bulky item pickup, graffiti removal, report animal-related services, notify the city of illegal dumping, pothole repair, street sweeping, find city resources, pay your L A D W P bill, and so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated My L A three-one-one app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on I O S or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free My L A three-one-one app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the Create a Service Request tab, and this takes you to the Create Service Request page. Under Popular Service Request, right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the No button and fill out the required information. Check this out. You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the L A River, or on vacant lots. Hit the Done button when you are ready to move forward. Our new My L A three-one-one system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch Details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree. You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by five A M., if not out already. Then... Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include City Bill Pay and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara &amp; Luck, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern goofy architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles's strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
One of the single most effective safety improvements for reducing crashes between turning vehicles and people walking is installing Protected Left Turn Signals. As drivers wait to turn left, they focus most of their attention on yielding to oncoming cars and the traffic light itself. Research shows that looking for people walking is just an afterthought. A Protected Left Turn is a dedicated lane and signal, usually a green arrow, that stops oncoming traffic and gives drivers making a left turn the complete right of way. Later in the cycle, people walking have an opportunity to cross with a walk signal, while drivers turning left see a red arrow. These signals reduce left-turn crashes by 99%. Moving L.A. forward.
We have had customers call us over 7,100 times in 2020 alone to tell us about a scam that they have been potentially targeted on. This newest scam has our logo on it, saying that it's some sort of debt relief because of COVID. We are not cutting someone's service because they can't pay their bill. If you have any sort of feeling that something isn't right, get in touch with us. Go onto our website and hit the Contact Us button, and quick and easy, send us an email, let us know your scam, and if you need us to call you back, we absolutely will.
It's a reminder that we live in earthquake country in L.A., right? And it could happen anytime. Obviously, we're distracted by the pandemic, but we need to ensure that we're prepared for it. What you need to do, number one, you need to ensure that you have enough supplies to be able to live on your own for seven days. Forget the 72 hours, that's out the window. Seven to 14 days is more of a reality, especially if it's a 7.2, 7.3, if it's a large-scale earthquake. We saw what happened in Ortrage, 6.4, right? And we had 10 cities popping up all over the city. Make sure that you have the equipment you need to survive. For example, a radio, batteries, a flashlight, simple things that will become so crucial post an earthquake.
We've reached nearly 500 megawatts of installed solar as of last year. So 50,000 customers that have got solar. If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, what do I do? Our net metering program is available. If you want to purchase a solar system and help reduce your bill, you can do that. But if you can't afford to make that investment in solar and you're a single-family homeowner, we will actually partner with you. LADWP can install a solar system on your home and will actually provide you a monthly check for partnering with us on that solar program. And that's called our Solar Rooftops Program. Information on that program is also available on ladwp.com/solar.
Today, we take a big step forward by creating the Community Safety Partnership Bureau in the Los Angeles Police Department.
This isn't an LAPD program. This is a community program.
This is big, and in police world, this takes courage. It sends a message across the country.
I, for one, will say this is the only way that I've seen in a systematic way where you can do policing in communities like South Los Angeles, where the community feels like the police department works on their behalf.
It's a joint venture to improve the safety and the well-being of people who have never felt safe.
One of the important components of this program is the forgiveness, understanding our history and what has occurred in the past, and not being afraid to say, "I'm sorry." And that's what this program is about.
Trust is the best crime-fighting strategy. This is the future of American policing.
America is home to some of the best hospitals, and Los Angeles in particular has a few. The staff of five Southland hospitals have received high marks from the U.S. News and World Report for their outstanding work: UCLA Health, UCI Health, Hogue Memorial Hospital Presbyterian, Kek Medical Center of USC, and USC Norris Cancer Hospital. The rankings give recognition to hospitals that excel in treating the most challenging patients and conditions. UCLA Health Hospitals in Westwood and Santa Monica took top honors with being number one in both L.A. and California, with a number four ranking in the country. The standard L.A. is setting with its work on zero-mission is unprecedented, and now Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has deployed its first zero-mission bus for the G Line in San Fernando Valley, with 40 more buses planned by the end of the year. The G Line opened 15 years ago and runs 24/7. About half of the bus's lines, 30,000 riders, have returned since the pandemic hit. Los Angeles City Metro System will add 100 zero-mission buses in total by the end of 2020. More than half of nannies, home care workers, and house cleaners experience pressure to work in dangerous conditions by their employers. The report, "Hidden Work, Hidden Pain: Injury Experiences of Domestic Workers in California", offers insight that these workers need to be added to California's occupational safety and health protections, according to UCLA's Labor Occupational Safety and Health Program. A staggering 85% of respondents described workplace injuries, with half continuing to work due to fear of losing their job. Supporters say that workplace protections should extend to residential domestic workers, and this would be accomplished through the passing of the Senate Bill 1257, the Health and Safety for All Workers Act. SB 1257 was already passed in the state senate this past June. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield has procured 3,000 bottles of hand sanitizer from Best Formulations Incorporated for distribution in the West San Fernando Valley. Best Formulations Incorporated, Project WAWU, "We Are With You," utilizing his Emergency Preparedness Community Action Team, Bobcat. Councilmember Blumenfield will distribute the bottles of sanitizer to constituents, homeless, first responders, seniors, and others, with bottles being dispersed at all local events and directly to local organizations. The wildly popular Fever Originals Candlelight Series is heading to your favorite outdoor restaurants in their new socially distant and intimate open-air dinner series. Now held exclusively in open-air restaurants, enjoy the pairing of their signature classical music programs and your favorite dishes from El Cid, while the surroundings flicker by candlelight. Prepare to enjoy the best eats L.A. has to offer and some of the most treasured classical masterpieces. Your dining experience promises to be both magical and relaxing with a candlelight open-air dinner featuring Vivaldi at El Cid. 4212 West Sunset Boulevard. For ticket information, visit their listing on feverup.com. It's been called one of the best livestream comedy shows to watch while quarantining. Beth Lepides brings you Uncabaret Zoom Edition. Join the fun August 9 when her guests Isaac Mizrahi, Julia Sweeney, Alec Mapa, Josie Long, and others share stories, wisdom, rants, and song. Don't miss a legendary comedy innovation largely responsible for the revolution in alt-comedy. Uncabaret Zoom Edition rolls out Sunday, August 9, beginning at 7:30 p.m. For details and ticket information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Be sure to check out the Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival online. In this current times of a global pandemic and human rights movement, the need and responsibility to bear witness to the stories told by artists from around the world is as important as ever. The Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival highlights narratives and experiences of those that have been left out of the traditional limelight, while celebrating the power of storytelling and filmmaking. This is the first year LADFF will be 100% streamable, using technology to reach a wider audience and amplifying voices with and for the global independent film community. Great stories are streaming August 4 through the 30th. For more information, visit ladff.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do. In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, everyday civilian city employees were deployed and activated as disaster service workers.
Being a DSW worker, I think, is just like one of the best things that you can ever do, because you're given an opportunity to help somebody less fortunate than yourself.
The simple fact of having the interaction with the homeless and seeing the hope in their eyes is actually great.
I'm proud to be a disaster service worker.
As a DSW worker, we are helping people that can't help themselves. For example, here at Dodger Stadium, people come here to take a test, and if they don't have an appointment, we help them make an appointment.
I work in different stations as pre-check, check-in, and also as demonstration. I am proud to be a disaster service worker.
I feel like I have a lot of purpose because of this. A lot of us are stuck at home, not doing much, and being able to go out and actually do something physical, kind of get to interact with people and talk to them about how they're getting through this whole thing, so it's really rewarding.
Hearing the stories of the clients that are here made me really understand that there's, you know, different situations that people go through.
These volunteers took to heart their civic duty calling and became our everyday heroes.
There's never a boring day as a disaster service worker. It can be really tiring, it can be really draining, but it's also really fulfilling, too, being out there in the community and helping out.
A lot of appreciation for what I have. Many times, I think that you don't have much in life, but when you get to actually work with those who are less fortunate this time, it has definitely made me appreciate life in itself.
People know that even in the most difficult times, they still have we to help them. Like, they still have us to help them, and they're not alone.
Thank you so much to the more than 2,500 L.A. city employees who have served as disaster service workers, and to all those who will serve in the weeks ahead.
During the COVID pandemic, we need all hands on deck, and you are a valuable set of hands for us. In fact, I consider you part of our public safety team.
You who served as disaster service workers went beyond the call of duty to ensure that our most vulnerable and neediest neighbors were taken care of.
You've really stood tall. You've really provided leadership at a moment of crisis, and you've really been the better angels of the city.
I often tell everybody how much city workers are really dedicated to the city, and you have proved that once again with your actions.
You are all superheroes among many heroes in our community.
As a disaster service worker during the COVID-19 pandemic, there is no more important work than you are doing right now.
We cannot do anything without you, and we really appreciate all the valuable contributions. You've really helped our most vulnerable Angelinos through this very difficult time.
Your commitment to your city and your neighbors is a credit to all city workers.
Your selfless actions, working at the test centers, Project Brimkey, and the many other DSW assignments have served the city and the many Angelinos in need during these difficult times.
You embody what it is to be a city employee. Your work and dedication is critical to the city of Los Angeles in this time of need.
What you do during the sun present time is very essential and very important to the city.
Putting shelters over our homeless community, providing food to our senior citizens, you are saving lives. We're so proud of you.
I see you, and I appreciate so much as somebody who lives in the city of L.A. and who loves the city of Los Angeles, your service to your city.
The testing site, helping older Angelinos at a senior meals hotline, or assisting those who are experiencing homelessness at a shelter.
You've made a huge difference in the daily lives and saved probably many lives throughout this pandemic.
Just wanted to thank all of you disaster service workers for your great efforts in helping the city of Los Angeles.
I really want to thank the over 185 employees from the Bureau of Engineering who have served as disaster service workers.
So on behalf of the 4 million residents we all serve, thank you for your selflessness, your dedication, and being angels in this city of angels.
And from my team to yours, I want to say, "Thank you!"
I really want to thank you. You are the best of Los Angeles.
Offer you a big virtual hug and a super mil gracias and a very heartfelt thank you.
Thank you all again.
So again, you have our deepest gratitude.
On behalf of myself and the Information Technology Agency, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing.
From every department around the city, thank you.
I am so proud of you, so proud to serve alongside you as a city employee. Thank you so much.
Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You are an example of why Los Angeles is called the City of Angels. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks to all of you.
On behalf of your colleagues, we love you, we appreciate you, you are our heroes. Thank you.
We're all so grateful for the city workforce and all the work that you've done throughout this pandemic. Thank you.
Once again, thank you.
We will get through these days together, and we will get through them because of you.
L.A. strong.
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 To our everyday heroes, to you we say thank you.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA 311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA 311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the Create a Service Request tab, and this takes you to the Create Service Request page. Under Popular Service Request, right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the No button and fill out the required information. Check this out. You can hold and drag to move the pin, or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the L.A. River, or on vacant lots. Hit the Done button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA 311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch Details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree. You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA 311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address, or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include city bill pay, and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall news. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA 311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you're landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrra and Luckler, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
that have caught solar. If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, what do I do? Our net metering program is available. If you want to purchase a solar system and help reduce your bill, you can do that. But if you can't afford to make that investment in solar and you're a single-family homeowner, we will actually partner with you. LADWP can install a solar system on your home and we'll actually provide you a monthly check for partnering with us on that solar program. And that's called our Solar rooftops program. Information on that program is also available on ladwp.com/solar.
Today, we take a big step forward by creating the Community Safety Partnership Bureau in the Los Angeles Police Department.
This isn't an LAPD program. This is a community program.
This is big, and in police world, this takes courage. It sends a message across the country.
I, for one, will say this is the only way that I've seen in a systematic way where you can do policing in communities like South Los Angeles, where the community feels like the police department works on their behalf.
It's a joint venture to improve the safety and the well-being of people who have never felt safe.
One of the important components of this program is the forgiveness. Understanding our history and what has occurred in the past and not being afraid to say, "I'm sorry," and that's what this program is about.
Trust is the best crime-fighting strategy. This is the future of American policing.
America is home to some of the best hospitals, and Los Angeles in particular has a few. The staff of five Southwest hospitals have received high marks from the U.S. News and World Report for their outstanding work. UCLA Health, UCI Health, Pogue Memorial Hospital Presbyterian, Keck Medical Center of USC, and USC Norris Cancer Hospital. The rankings give recognition to hospitals that excel in treating the most challenging patients and conditions. UCLA Health Hospitals in Westwood and Santa Monica took top honors with being number one in both LA and California, with a number four ranking in the country. The standard LA is setting with its work on zero-mission is unprecedented. And now, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has deployed its first zero-mission bus for the G Line in San Fernando Valley, with 40 more buses planned by the end of the year. The G Line opened 15 years ago and runs 24/7. About half of the bus's lines, 30,000 riders, have returned since the pandemic hit. Los Angeles City Metro System will add 100 zero-mission buses in total by the end of 2020. More than half of nannies, home care workers, and house cleaners experience pressure to work in dangerous conditions by their employers. The report, "Hidden Work, Hidden Pain: Injury Experiences of Domestic Workers in California", offers insight that these workers need to be added to California's occupational safety and health protections, according to UCLA's Labor Occupational Safety and Health Program. A staggering 85% of respondents described workplace injuries, with half continuing to work due to fear of losing their job. Supporters say that workplace protections should extend to residential domestic workers, and this would be accomplished through the passing of the Senate Bill 1257, the Health and Safety for All Workers Act. SB 1257 was already passed in the State Senate this past June. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield has procured 3,000 bottles of hand sanitizer from Best Formulations Incorporated for distribution in the West San Fernando Valley. Best Formulations Incorporated, Project WAWU, "We Are With You," utilizing his Emergency Preparedness Community Action Team, Bobcat. Councilmember Blumenfield will distribute the bottles of sanitizer to constituents, homeless, first responders, seniors, and others, with bottles being dispersed at all local events and directly to local organizations. The wildly popular Fever Originals Candlelight Series is heading to your favorite outdoor restaurants in their new socially distant and intimate open-air dinner series. Now held exclusively in open-air restaurants, enjoy the pairing of their signature classical music programs and your favorite dishes from El Cid while the surroundings flicker by candlelight. Prepare to enjoy the best eats LA has to offer and some of the most treasured classical masterpieces. Your dining experience promises to be both magical and relaxing with a candlelight open-air dinner featuring Vivaldi at El Cid. 4212 West Sunset Boulevard. For ticket information, visit their listing on feverup.com. It's been called one of the best livestream comedy shows to watch while quarantining. Beth Lepides brings you Uncabaret Zoom Edition. Join the fun August 9 when her guests Isaac Mizrahi, Julia Sweeney, Alec Mapa, Josie Long, and others share stories, wisdom, rants, and song. Don't miss a legendary comedy innovation largely responsible for the revolution in alt-comedy. Uncabaret Zoom Edition rolls out Sunday, August 9, beginning at 7:30 PM. For details and ticket information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Be sure to check out the Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival online. In this current times of a global pandemic and human rights movement, the need and responsibility to bear witness to the stories told by artists from around the world is as important as ever. The Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival highlights narratives and experiences of those that have been left out of the traditional limelight while celebrating the power of storytelling and filmmaking. This is the first year LADFF will be 100% streamable, using technology to reach a wider audience and amplifying voices with and for the global independent film community. Great stories are streaming August 4 through the 30th. For more information, visit ladff.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, everyday civilian city employees were deployed and activated as disaster service workers.
Being a DSW worker, I think, is just like one of the best things that you can ever do, because you're given an opportunity to help somebody less fortunate than yourself.
The simple fact of having the interaction with the homeless and seeing the hope in their eyes is actually great.
I'm proud to be a disaster service worker.
As a DSW worker, we are helping people that can't help themselves. For example, here at Dodger Stadium, people come here to take a test, and if they don't have an appointment, we help them make an appointment.
I work in different stations as pre-check, check-in, and also as demonstration. I am proud to be a disaster service worker.
I feel like I have a lot of purpose because of it. A lot of us are stuck at home, not doing much, and being able to go out and actually do something physical, kind of get to interact with people and talk to them about how they're getting through this whole thing, so it's really rewarding.
Hearing the stories of the clients that are here made me really understand that there's, you know, different situations that people go through.
These volunteers took to heart their civic duty calling and became our everyday heroes.
There was never a boring day as a disaster service worker. It can be really tiring, it can be really draining, but it's also really fulfilling too, being out there in the community, helping out.
A lot of appreciation for what I have. Many times, we think that you don't have much in life, but when you get to actually work with those who are less fortunate this time, it has definitely made me appreciate life in itself.
People know that even in the most difficult times, they still have we to help them, like they still have us to help them, and they're not alone.
Thank you so much to the more than 2,500 LA city employees who have served as disaster service workers and to all those who will serve in the weeks ahead.
During the COVID pandemic, we need all hands on deck, and you are a valuable set of hands for us. In fact, I consider you part of our public safety team.
You who served as disaster service workers went beyond the call of duty to ensure that our most vulnerable and neediest neighbors were taken care of.
You've really stood tall. You've really provided leadership at a moment of crisis, and you've really been the better angels of the city.
I often tell everybody how much city workers are really dedicated to the city, and you have proved that once again with your actions.
You are all superheroes among many heroes in our community.
As a disaster service worker during the COVID-19 pandemic, there is no more important work than you are doing right now.
We cannot do anything without you, and we really appreciate all the valuable contributions. You've really helped our most vulnerable Angelinos through this very difficult time.
Your commitment to your city and your neighbors is a credit to all city workers.
Your selfless actions working at the test centers, Project Brimkey, and the many other DSW assignments have served the city and the many Angelinos in need during these difficult times.
You embody what it is to be a city employee. Your work and dedication is critical to the city of Los Angeles in this time of need.
What you do during the summer set at the time is very essential and very important to the city.
Putting shelters over our homeless community, providing food to our senior citizens, you are saving lives. We're so proud of you.
I see you, and I appreciate so much as somebody who lives in the city of LA and who loves the city of Los Angeles, your service to your city.
The testing site, helping older Angelinos at a senior meals hotline, or assisting those who are experiencing homelessness at a shelter.
You've made a huge difference in the daily lives and saved probably many lives throughout this pandemic.
Just wanted to thank all of you disaster service workers for your great efforts in helping the city of Los Angeles.
I really want to thank the over 185 employees from the Bureau of Engineering who have served as disaster service workers.
So on behalf of the 4 million residents we all serve, thank you for your selflessness, your dedication, and being angels in this city of angels.
And from my team to yours, I want to say, "Thank you."
I really want to thank you. You are the best of Los Angeles.
Offer you a big virtual hug and a super mil gracias and a very heartfelt thank you.
Thank you all again.
So again, you have our deepest gratitude.
On behalf of myself and the Information Technology Agency, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing.
From every department around the city, thank you.
I am so proud of you, so proud to serve alongside you as a city employee. Thank you so much.
Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You are an example of why Los Angeles is called the city of angels. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks to all of you.
On behalf of your colleagues, we love you, we appreciate you, you are our heroes. Thank you.
We're all so grateful for the city workforce and all the work that you've done throughout this pandemic. Thank you.
Once again, thank you.
We will get through these days together, and we will get through them because of you.
LA Strong.
LA Strong.
Ali Strong.
LA Strong.
Ali Strong.
LA Strong.
Ali Strong.
To our everyday heroes, to you we say thank you.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA 311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA 311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the Create a Service Request tab, and this takes you to the Create Service Request page. Under Popular Service Request, right on top of the list is Bulky Items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the No button and fill out the required information. Check this out. You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the LA River, or on vacant lots. Hit the Done button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA 311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch Details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the Select Location of the Item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as, "Next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 AM, if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA 311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include City Bill Pay and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA 311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands. MyL.A. 311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierra &amp; Look, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Not it, not it.
Again?
Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
One of the single most effective safety improvements for reducing crashes between turning vehicles and people walking is installing Protected Left Turn Signals. As drivers wait to turn left, they focus most of their attention on yielding to oncoming cars and the traffic light itself. Research shows that looking for people walking is just an afterthought. A Protected Left Turn is a dedicated lane and signal, usually a green arrow, that stops oncoming traffic and gives drivers making a left turn the complete right of way. Later in the cycle, people walking have an opportunity to cross with a walk signal, while drivers turning left see a red arrow. These signals reduce left turn crashes by 99%. Moving L.A. Forward. We have had customers call us over 7,100 times in 2020 alone to tell us about a scam that they have been potentially targeted on. This newest scam has our logo on it, saying that it's some sort of debt relief because of COVID. We are not cutting someone's service because they can't pay their bill. If you have any sort of feeling that something isn't right, get in touch with us. Go onto our website and hit the "Contact Us" button, and quick and easy, send us an email. Let us know your scam, and if you need us to call you back, we absolutely will.
It's a reminder that we live in earthquake country in L.A., right? And it could happen anytime. Obviously, we're distracted by the pandemic, but we need to ensure that we're prepared for it. What you need to do, number one, you need to ensure that you have enough supplies to be able to live on your own for seven days. Forget the 72 hours, that's out the window. Seven to 14 days is more of a reality, especially if it's a 7.2, 7.3, if it's a large-scale earthquake. We saw what happened in Nortrych, 6.4, right? And we had 10 cities popping up all over the city. Make sure that you have the equipment you need to survive. For example, a radio, batteries, a flashlight, simple things that will become so crucial post-an earthquake.
We've reached nearly 500 megawatts of installed solar as of last year. And so, 50,000 customers that have caught solar. If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, what do I do? Our net metering program is available. If you want to purchase a solar system and help reduce your bill, you can do that. But if you can't afford to make that investment in solar and you're a single-family homeowner, we will actually partner with you. LADWP can install a solar system on your home, and we'll actually provide you a monthly check if you're partnering with us on that solar program. And that's called our Solar Rooftops Program. Information on that program is also available on ladwp.com/solar.
Today, we take a big step forward by creating the Community Safety Partnership Bureau in the Los Angeles Police Department.
This isn't an LAPD program. This is a community program.
This is big, and in police world, this takes courage. It sends a message across the country.
I, for one, will say this is the only way that I've seen in a systematic way where you can do policing in communities like South Los Angeles, where the community feels like the police department works on their behalf.
It's a joint venture to improve the safety and the well-being of people who have never felt safe.
One of the important components of this
One of the important components of this program is the forgiveness. Understanding our history and what has occurred in the past and not being afraid to say, I'm sorry. And that's what this program is about.
Trust is the best crime-fighting strategy. This is the future of American policing.
America is home to some of the best hospitals, and Los Angeles in particular has a few. The staff of five Southland hospitals have received high marks from the U.S. News and World Report for their outstanding work. UCLA Health, UCI Health, Hogue Memorial Hospital Presbyterian, Keck Medical Center of USC, and USC Norris Cancer Hospital. The rankings give recognition to hospitals that excel in treating the most challenging patients and conditions. UCLA Health Hospitals in Westwood and Santa Monica took top honors with being number one in both LA and California, with a number four ranking in the country. The standard LA is setting with its work on zero-mission is unprecedented. And now, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has deployed its first zero-mission bus for the G Line in San Fernando Valley, with 40 more buses planned by the end of the year. The G Line opened 15 years ago and runs 24/7. About half of the bus's lines, 30,000 riders, have returned since the pandemic hit. Los Angeles City Metro System will add 100 zero-mission buses in total by the end of 2020. More than half of nannies, home care workers, and house cleaners experience pressure to work in dangerous conditions by their employers. The report, Hidden Work, Hidden Pain: Injury Experiences of Domestic Workers in California, offers insight that these workers need to be added to California's occupational safety and health protections, according to UCLA's Labor Occupational Safety and Health Program. A staggering 85% of respondents described workplace injuries, with half continuing to work due to fear of losing their job. Supporters say that workplace protections should extend to residential domestic workers, and this would be accomplished through the passing of Senate Bill 1257, the Health and Safety for All Workers Act. SB 1257 was already passed in the State Senate this past June. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield has procured 3,000 bottles of hand sanitizer from Best Formulations Incorporated for distribution in the West San Fernando Valley. Best Formulations Incorporated, Project WAWU, We Are With You, utilizing his Emergency Preparedness Community Action Team, Bobcat, Councilmember Blumenfield will distribute the bottles of sanitizer to constituents, homeless, first responders, seniors, and others, with bottles being dispersed at all local events and directly to local organizations. The wildly popular Fever Originals Candlelight Series is heading to your favorite outdoor restaurants in their new socially distant and intimate open-air dinner series. Now held exclusively in open-air restaurants, enjoy the pairing of their signature classical music programs and your favorite dishes from El Cid, while the surroundings flicker by candlelight. Prepare to enjoy the best eats LA has to offer and some of the most treasured classical masterpieces. Your dining experience promises to be both magical and relaxing with a candlelight open-air dinner featuring Vivaldi at El Cid. 4212 West Sunset Boulevard. For ticket information, visit their listing on feverup.com. It's been called one of the best livestream comedy shows to watch while quarantining. Beth Lepides brings you Uncabaret Zoom Edition. Join the fun August 9 when her guests Isaac Mizrahi, Julia Sweeney, Alec Mapa, Josie Long, and others share stories, wisdom, rants, and song. Don't miss a legendary comedy innovation largely responsible for the revolution in alt-comedy. Uncabaret Zoom Edition rolls out Sunday, August 9, beginning at 7:30 p.m. For details and ticket information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Be sure to check out the Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival online. In this current times of a global pandemic and human rights movement, the need and responsibility to bear witness to the stories told by artists from around the world is as important as ever. The Los Angeles Diversity Film Festival highlights narratives and experiences of those that have been left out of the traditional limelight, while celebrating the power of storytelling and filmmaking. This is the first year LADFF will be 100% streamable, using technology to reach a wider audience and amplifying voices with and for the global independent film community. Great stories are streaming August 4 through the 30. For more information, visit laddff.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, everyday civilian city employees were deployed and activated as disaster service workers.
Being a DSW worker, I think, is just like one of the best things that you can ever do. Because you're given an opportunity to help somebody less fortunate than yourself.
The simple fact of having the interaction with the homeless and seeing the hope in their eyes is actually great.
I'm proud to be a disaster service worker.
As a DSW worker, we are helping people that can't help themselves. For example, here at Dodger Stadium, people come here to take a test, and if they don't have an appointment, we help them make an appointment.
I work in different stations as pre-check, check-in, and also as demonstration. I am proud to be a disaster service worker.
I feel like I have a lot of purpose because of this. A lot of us are stuck at home, not doing much, and being able to go out and actually do something physical, kind of get to interact with people and talk to them about how they're getting through this whole thing. So it's really rewarding.
Hearing the stories of the clients that are here made me really understand that there's, you know, different situations that people go through.
These volunteers took to heart their civic duty calling and became our everyday heroes.
There's never a boring day as a disaster service worker. It can be really tiring, it can be really draining. But it's also really fulfilling, too, being out there in the community and helping out.
A lot of appreciation for what I have. Many times, you think that you don't have much in life, but when you get to actually work with those who are less fortunate this time, it has definitely made me appreciate life in itself.
People know that even in the most difficult times, they still have we to help them. Like, they still have us to help them, and they're not alone.
Thank you so much to the more than 2,500 LA city employees who have served as disaster service workers and to all those who will serve in the weeks ahead.
During the COVID pandemic, we need all hands on deck, and you are a valuable set of hands for us. In fact, I consider you part of our public safety team.
You who served as disaster service workers went beyond the call of duty to ensure that our most vulnerable and neediest neighbors were taken care of.
You've really stood tall. You've really provided leadership at a moment of crisis. And you've really been the better angels of the city.
I often tell everybody how much city workers are really dedicated to the city, and you have proved that once again with your actions.
You are all superheroes among many heroes in our community.
As a disaster service worker during the COVID-19 pandemic, there is no more important work than you are doing right now.
We cannot do anything without you, and we really appreciate all the valuable contributions. You've really helped our most vulnerable Angelinos through this very difficult time.
Your commitment to your city and your neighbors is a credit to all city workers.
Your selfless actions working at the test centers, Project Brimkey, and the many other DSW assignments have served the city and the many Angelinos in need during these difficult times.
You embody what it is to be a city employee. Your work and dedication is critical to the city of Los Angeles in this time of need.
What you do during the summer setting time is very essential and very important to the city.
Putting shelters over our homeless community, providing food to our senior citizens, you are saving lives. We're so proud of you.
I see you, and I appreciate so much as somebody who lives in the city of LA and who loves the city of Los Angeles, your service to your city.
The testing site, helping older Angelinos at a senior meals hotline, or assisting those who are experiencing homelessness at a shelter.
You've made a huge difference in the daily lives and saved probably many lives throughout this pandemic.
Just wanted to thank all of you disaster service workers for your great efforts in helping the city of Los Angeles.
I really want to thank the over 185 employees from the Bureau of Engineering who have served as disaster service workers.
So on behalf of the 4 million residents we all serve, thank you for your selflessness, your dedication, and being angels in this city of angels.
And from my team to yours, I want to say, "Thank you."
I really want to thank you. You are the best of Los Angeles.
I'll offer you a big bird.
It doesn't matter. Do you want to read it first?
I can read it first, then you read, and then I say motion. Wait, is it motion introduced or motion introduced? Is pencil wrong?
So.
Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go ahead and return back to our open session meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to report out?
There is nothing to report pursuant to the Brown Act on either item 16 or item 17.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead. Madam Corretts, move on to verbal motions. How many do we have?
We have nine. First one is a motion introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson and Corretts. It is referred to Personnel and Animal Welfare and Budget and Finance Committees. And this motion is relative to staffing for the Los Angeles Police Department Community Safety Partnership Bureau. Is there a second for this motion?
Was this introduced by Mr. Corretts, or was Mr. Corretts the second on the motion?
It is co-presented.
Okay, is there a second on this motion? Mr. Price. Okay, next one.
Next is a resolution that's referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And it is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez relative to including in the 2019-2020 state legislative program support for Proposition 16, which would allow government agencies to give preferential consideration based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in employment, contracting, and education. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Price.
Next one.
Next is a resolution referred to Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations introduced by Councilmember Rue. And it is to include in the 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for HR 6721, the COVID-19 Hate Crimes Act, which would require the Attorney General to designate a Department of Justice officer to provide greater oversight of COVID-19-related hate crimes.
Corretts, second.
Second by Mr. Corretts, next.
Next is a resolution also referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. This resolution was co-presented by Councilmember Rue and Councilmember Bonin relative to including in the 2019-2020 state legislative program support for AB 1703Bloom, which would establish a right of first offer on multifamily residential properties for qualified organizations. Is there a second for this resolution?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield. Next.
The next motion has been referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. This has been presented by Councilmembers Harris Dawson, Krikorian, and Price. It moves to appropriate $20 million within the UB Fund from the Reserve for Preservation of City Services, reinvestment in disadvantaged communities, and communities of color, reimagining public safety service delivery, and targeted local hire program, to move the $20 million from this line item to a new line item entitled Targeted Local Hire Program Disadvantaged Communities. A second.
Second.
Were you finished before? Second by Mr. Rue. Next.
Thank you. A resolution to be referred to the Transportation Committee has been introduced by Councilmember Lee. Prohibits parking of oversized vehicles and along certain times, along Haskell Street from Chatsworth Avenue to San Fernando Mission Boulevard, and both sides of Bermuda Street from Haskell to Blue Chair Avenue. And a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts. Next.
Thank you. A motion to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee has been introduced by Councilmember Lee. Requests that Planning Department with the Bureau of Engineering reports to council with a detailed assessment of assets in the designated Chatsworth-Northridge Industrial Core in the 818 geographical area. A second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian. Next.
A motion to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee introduced by Councilmember Lee instructs the Department of Cultural Affairs to prepare an application relative to the inclusion of palm trees that line March Avenue between Ingamar and Justice Streets, and to move this into the list of historical cultural monuments. And a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Next.
Thank you. And the last verbal motion introduced by Councilmember Lee to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee is to authorize the Bureau of Street Services to manufacture and install ceremonial signs on a city light pole in front of the baseball statum on Linley regarding the Northridge, Cal State Northridge Matadors baseball. And a second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. That completes the verbal motions that we're aware of.
Members, are there any verbal motions? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I therefore move that the City Council instruct the Department of Building and Safety, Department of City Planning, Department of Water and Power, and Housing, Community Investment Department to form a working group to identify buildings, zoning, housing, and municipal code violations impacting communities, community well-being, and report back to the City Council outlining additional deterrence tools that can be adopted to remedy these violations. these violations, including but not limited to DWP shut-offs, certificate of occupancy holds, or revocations, permit prohibitions, or on the same or related properties, and scorched earth penalties. I further move that the City Attorney be requested to draft an ordinance based on the deterrence tools recommended by DBS, DCP, DWP, and H Sid that can be used to hold property owners accountable for parties hosted at their properties that violate the county public health order and put public health at risk during this COVID-19 pandemic. These penalties should be in addition to those available under the loud and unruly gathering ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. The motion, the moving clause is I therefore move that the City Council appropriate $450,000 from the fiscal year 2020-2021 general purposes, general city purposes, additional homeless services line item to support the homeless housing and recovery project in partnership with the Tartana Treatment Centers Incorporated and Providence for temporary housing, patient navigators, and ancillary services. I further move that the city administrative officer prepare the necessary controller instructions to effectuate the intent of this motion and authorize the controller to implement said instructions. This is co-presented by myself and Ms. Rodriguez and seconded by Mr. O'Farrell. Second.
Mr. O'Farrell, second it. Okay, and seeing no others, members? Madam Clerk, what is, what is before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral. The motions will be posted on the city's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? Mr. Buscano?
Adjourning motion.
Okay, but are there any announcements?
Yes.
Seeing none. Mr., okay, are there any announcements?
Yes.
Mr. Krikorian, do you have an announcement?
No, Madam President, just a comment during adjournment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blumenfield, announcement?
Yes, Public Works Committee was having a joint committee meeting with Transportation. We'll meet at 1:30 instead of 1 o'clock.
All right, thank you for that. Any other announcements? Okay, Mr. Buscano, for adjourning motions.
Thank you, Madam President and members. It's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Doris Mills Norris, a beloved member of the Watts community. She was born April 23rd, 1943, in Taylor, Texas, to Thomas Brickland Sr. and Johnny Mae Cole. Doris was the oldest of five children and often talked about how she enjoyed taking care of her younger siblings. After graduating from Pickard High School in Brenham, Texas, Doris went on to pursue her dream of becoming a nurse. Her journey took her to Delmar College, Compton College, Southwest College. Doris continued her love for education and attended Cal State LA College and University of Phoenix, and she received her bachelor's degree in nursing and psychology. In 1987, Doris married Charles Thomas Norris. They had two children, Alex and Ashley. Doris and Charles opened their arms and home to welcome four more children over the years. She was a faithful member of Greater Circle Mission Church, Exalted Word Church, and Calvary Chapel in South Bay. Doris ministry stood out when she became a member of Hope Central Watts, where she spent her life, her time mentoring young women. She was employed at Martin Luther King Junior Hospital, County Hospital, where she specialized in labor and delivery and later became supervising nurse at LA County Central Juvenile Hall. Her most cherished time in her life was feeding the homeless on the streets of LA during the holidays, and she wanted to make sure that she had homemade meals, blankets, and clothes. Doris would feed over 600 people each Thanksgiving and Christmas. The family, Watts community, and neighbors and friends honor, are proud to honor and remember Mama Doris, as we called her, as a person who gave every day to everybody. I was blessed to, during, in 2011, I was cold-calling folks, voters, and I came across Doris Mills Norris, and I told her I'd like to earn your vote for City Council, and she-
Are they going to, are they going to call in?
I don't have any faith and trust in local government. A lot of politicians come and go here in Watts without delivering. I go, "Well, let me help you prove that." She said, "Well, come on over." The following day, I went on over to Mama Doris. She says, "I'm going to cook you some pasta." And sure enough, from that day on, it was a bond between myself and Mama Doris. She demanded the improvement of the 109th Street Park in Watts, which was directly across from her street, and we were able, together with Mama Doris and the community, to deliver a brand-new pool facility. We brought in the LA Galaxy to help with the foosball courts there, and we were hopeful. And I know that she was able to have that faith and trust in local government because we included her in the problem-solving process of improving the quality of life for the Watts residents in and around her neighborhood. She will be truly missed. I loved her dearly. She is survived by her children Alexander, Ashley, Angela, Marqueta, Yessenia, and Antuika, and eight grandchildren. A host of family and friends. Services will be held Monday, Benner Cemetery in Riverside. Mama Doris, I love you. I'm going to miss you. May you rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, as you all know, yesterday Beirut, Lebanon was rocked by a devastating and tragic explosion that so far has taken the lives of over 135 people and wounded thousands. That number of dead will certainly rise in coming days, given the magnitude of the horrendous explosion. Beirut has been our sister city of the city of Los Angeles since 2006, and our city is home to many Lebanese-Americans, many of whom still have family in Beirut that they're worried about right now. So I think that it's appropriate that we keep our sister city in our thoughts, our hearts, and our prayers as they go through this horrendous tragedy and its aftermath, and that we adjourn this meeting in memory of those whose lives have been lost in that
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian.
Madam President, if I, if I may, really, really quick, this is Mitch. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for, for the adjourning motion. I too have many Lebanese friends and have worked with over the past couple of decades, and contacted the mayor yesterday evening, and I believe we're going to be able to light City Hall in the color of the Lebanese flag, possibly tonight. I'm waiting on confirmation of that. So, but I thank you for bringing this up. It was just a horrific sight, and there's going to be lots of sadness and devastation for a long time with what happened over in Beirut, which is one of the world's great cities with incredible, wonderful people who live there. So I would love to join in, in this adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of a devastating loss, the memory of Ms. Vicky D. Lindsay, the founder and CEO of a very, very important organization called Project Cry No More. Project Cry No More was a, a project of mothers who had lost sons or daughters to gun violence in our neighborhoods. Ms. Vicky Lindsay was such a, such a mom, and she founded the organization and convened other mothers who'd gone through similar situations. She grew up in Compton, California, and attended both Compton High School and Compton College. She worked for us as a bus driver in the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, driving throughout the city and county of Los Angeles, but especially remembers her drives out to Los Angeles County Jail to carry families, to visit family members who were locked up. During her breaks, she enjoyed writing poems on the back of passenger transfer pads from folks who would ride her bus. She wrote poems about life in South Los Angeles, about young mothers fighting for custody for their children, about folks addicted to cocaine and other drugs, and other folks and families that she would see while riding her bus. One of her most poignant poems was about an incident where a young man involved in an altercation with the police was shot in, before her eyes as she was driving her bus. And that poem got published on November 18th, 1995, in the Los Angeles Times. She wrote a lot to her son, Lionel, and urged him to plan for a positive future. She wrote a poem for him when he graduated from Compton High School. Unfortunately, a short time later, he was gunned down while attending a high school game at his alma mater in Compton, Compton High School. This came just a few years after Lionel had lost his father to gun violence. Seeking out an outlet to cope, Vicky channeled her bereavement into assisting other young mothers who were impacted by the same kind of violence and the same kind of loss. She joined a number of community organizations, include Mothers Against Drugs. She also was very, very active in Project Cry No More, I'm sorry, Project Ceasefire, which worked with gang interventionists to reduce shooting among folks involved in that life, as well as to expose young people involved in that life, to mothers, to have to look mothers in the eye and to feel their pain and to hear their stories every time they lost a member of their family. She was a board member of the United in Peace Foundation and an active member of a host of organizations, including Community Coalition, for many, many years. It's a great loss. We lost her this weekend. We join the community in asking that she rest in power and request that the City Council adjourn on her behalf.
And, and Madam President, I know I would like to be one of the signers on, on, on this motion as well. See, you know, my heart just breaks. All of the good, all of the pain that she endured in life, yet all of the good that she tried to do for, for so many other people. So I would like to sign that with you, Mr. Harris Dawson, remainable to that.
And, and gentlemen, I'd like to join both of you on that. She really was a hero in our community, always willing to give, and so it's sad to, to know that she's gone on, but I think we're better for it. Thank you.
Very well, Mr. Harris Dawson agrees to that. We can add both of you as well.
Mr. Harris Dawson agrees.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, members? Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
6.4, right? And we had 10 cities popping up all over the city. Make sure that you have the equipment you need to survive. For example, a radio, batteries, a flashlight, simple things that will become so crucial post an earthquake.